They got a few of them on that team there.
I think they got a lot of girls that if they were with it.
Yeah.
They could have.
Get a little good team. Some of them get a little bit aggressive.
I think that's harder for girls.
Well, my boys, you're a little aggressive as a girl, too.
Or you're not.
You can't teach that.
Yeah, you're not gonna make the timid guy where you can take a sort of a medium guy in tournaments.
A little bit.
We have all these people speaking on the channel. Text amendments. But I have a feeling that coming here to school on behalf of Matt, when Matt would make it up to me to support Matt. But I have a feeling it's gonna carry over this particular thing. I, I think we have to make an announcement to say this is only about the text amendment to even him. This is not about his project.
Once they get going, if they kind of veer off.
Yeah, they're going to disappoint him in the dressing room. It's not about whether he's for or against Matt Carroll. This isn't a privilege. He's still gotta make a, he's still gotta make a request to get the special use. He's asked the first, he doesn't, if we, he doesn't have a petition yet approved. He has petition for a tax amendment. Then he's gotta come back and ask for, yeah, he's gotta pay back and ask for it. He has to come off, he has to come back and ask for the special use.
Correct. After this is.
So if people get off to this court, Pat will just be saying, listen, you want to be with that? That's a bottom text amendment. You're the four best.
Yeah.
Small end. Yeah, six to three.
How the hell is that possible?
I don't know. There is so much wrong with what's on my record.
With the sign.
That's horrible.
Oh, fine. I was gonna say, you know. How are we gonna get that organized? I keep handing more and more to Mary Beth every time I find something. Can I, can I have this?
Yeah.
All right.
Carpentry?
Yeah, there are six districts. LDR, Neighborhood.
I'm opening it up right now.
Neighborhood. And also the ones out of the square.
That a lot like.
That, by especially you, it's a small inn as a lot. Six districts. My ordinance is six three.
Oh, you just don't have to help me do it.
Well, I don't think it's not.
It's working.
It's print.
Yeah, online is wrong.
Online is wrong. This is, this is from online.
Well, we gotta.
That's, that's kinda critical.
The ag one is still that way.
Say it again.
The ag, like the, the ag district stuff, like those land uses are still wrong on there. And like I said, that company doesn't. American Legal is like fighting with us to change it.
They don't wanna do it?
Well, they're, they're saying it's our fault. Not their fault. Our ordinances say otherwise.
Well, we just gotta hope someone will meet him, because we got two, we got conflicting things out there.
We, we can't have conflicting.
Yeah, no.
Can't handle it. And so which one is right?
The one in your hand.
Where did you get this from?
I've got it saved on my.
Do you have the whole ordinance, son? The whole ordinance?
Um. I've got my, I've got things like the bulk standards and land use tables. Like the bulk standards and land use tables and stuff all saved separately and.
We saved that for you.
Yeah. Sue, have you pushed it go live yet?
It is go live. I mean, it is live.
It is live now, but you gotta mute it.
Oh, yes. That's my ass.
Okay.
That's my ass, you sure?
All right.
So we gotta watch what we say now?
Please.
Dang it.
That always seems to bite me.
Sound is good.
Good. Jonathan?
Let's go.
Good, buddy. Okay, I got six thirty.
Okay.
You tell me.
So those are the southern criteria.
Ready? Okay. Let's go ahead and call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Beranty?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Gates?
Here.
Monahan?
Here.
Honey?
Here.
I'm Tyler Isatson and Rose.
Present. Okay, we do have a quorum. Twenty-five Z dash two thousand four, public comment. Not to exceed fifteen minutes per agenda item or more than three minutes per speaking. Do we have anyone that wants to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item twenty-five Z dash two thousand five. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion to approve, but I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carried. Unfinished business, there's none. New business. Twenty-five A dash zero one, public hearing. Owner applicant Matthew Carroll requests for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, code of ordinances, to amend section one five four dash four oh six D eight. Public accommodation, small inn. So since this is a public hearing, I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carried. Anyone who's gonna speak on this issue tonight needs to be sworn in by Mr. Knack. And again, we're only talking about the request on a text amendment. That's what we're here to discuss tonight. So if y'all raise your hands, Joe will swear you in.
I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we'll go ahead. Uh, Mr. Carroll, look, if you'd like to come forward. Everybody has signed in that's gonna speak tonight before we get going. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Matthew Carroll for Seven Weekers Street.
Is that Mike, man?
Well, thanks for coming out, uh, tonight, guys. Beautiful evening. Glad we're all here. I promised I'd be back, and here I am. Uh, based on the agenda, uh, upon this, I'm asking to update and change the text amendment to small inn ordinance to include multiple buildings on common contiguous property. Uh, you can see in the packet, uh, where the proposed changes are in the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer your questions regarding the changes. Additionally, there are explanations to why this text amendment is being sought. The deal is, uh, important to update the language, uh, based on what is already being done. Uh, we have them being done for years at other small inns around Galena, and rightfully so. It's important to adapt and evolve while keeping the integrity of our unique town. I wanna touch on several topics tonight. And the first being that this amendment, uh, is bending and adjusting the zoning amendment to benefit me and my needs. Like I said before, I am seeking to update the zoning language based on other small inns operating, uh, their properties with multiple buildings under the same ownership, with the same common parcel or others on different parcel numbers. By all of us here tonight, we're following the steps and processes by which this is being looked at. And tonight, uh, uh, looked at and, uh, looked at. And this process has a number of additional steps, uh, after this meeting tonight, including going before the city council, and then I would be coming back to the zoning board again after that. Zoning ordinances are very important and need to be followed. But Galena is also not any town in USA and needs to be looked at in various situations. For instance, ten years ago exactly, when I was before this very board, Jail Hill Inn may not have been possible at all as I needed onsite parking for all of my rooms. And it just wasn't possible unless I reopened Harrison Street located behind the inn and made the backyard of the inn a parking lot, which no one would have wanted, I know. So I was granted a parking variance to the small inn ordinance that allows my guests to park in front of the inn and across the street, uh, and has worked very well for the last ten years to make sure that all of my guests have a parking spot. Additionally, I wanna talk about a few topics, uh, that are before us tonight. And they include, uh, that this request will create vacation rental concepts, which have been capped in the city. I wanna talk about the importance of small inns and why this update to the small inn ordinance will not be a threat to our historic neighborhoods and properties. Small inns operating under more than one building are not vacation rental properties. Vacation rental properties operate under completely different ordinance and that's why we are here tonight. I have honestly never read the ordinance for vacation rentals, and it doesn't pertain, as it doesn't pertain to my business or what I'm requesting. Small inns and B and Bs are guest service centric, uh, where guests check in at a front desk, receive an amazing breakfast each morning, housekeeping during their stay, and access to owner innkeeper twenty-four seven that lives on site, many more services and amenities, and this would not change any of that. For instance, guests, uh, would check in at Jail Hill Inn, as all guests are. Guests would receive a property map detailing where they are staying, where they park, what is private property around the inn, including the properties around and even my personal property at four oh seven Meeker Street, and the expectations regarding amenities, et cetera. Jail Hill Inn is a member of Select Registry, which is a brand of three hundred of the top inns and B and Bs in the country. And to achieve that ranking, the property is inspected annually and guidelines have to be followed, uh, such as guests receive breakfast each morning and everything about the stay is an elevated experience overall. Uh, that said, anything with the Jail Hill name behind it, I think we all know it's going to be very high quality and everything will be done right. My guests would definitely know if it wasn't. Uh, since small inns are owner manager occupied properties, we know what's going on at all times. I'm confident to share in the last ten years at Jail Hill Inn, there has never been an issue to my knowledge, and that reflects the luxury and focus, uh, the luxury focus and clientele that Jail Hill attracts. Additionally, vacation rental properties are typically secondary or not fully primary, uh, 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 income for, for many owners. For small inns and B and Bs, it's our primary income. And for me, it's, it's my past, present, and future, meaning Jail Hill Inn exists because of its success and nothing more. There is no smoke and mirrors in everything you see that, uh, regarding the inn, my residence at four oh seven Meeker, and the recent purchase of four eleven Meeker is only because of my amazing guests and the love of jail and that love for Jail Hill Inn and Galena. With that, I'd like to explain the importance of small inns in Galena. The B and B and small inn ordinance was created about thirty to forty years ago to allow owners of these historic properties, uh, to generate income and maintain these important properties. And I think we can all agree that the B and Bs and small inns in Galena have been an important and integral part of our amazing town. And we can see that through the guests that the inns and B and Bs bring to Galena each year and the economic impact, uh, those guests create to our, uh, community, shopping, dining, uh, buying, uh, which can all be tracked through sales, health, tax, hotel occupancy, et cetera. But I'd like to dig a little deeper, uh, to what the small inns and B and Bs do for our community beyond bringing in guests. Uh, I can only speak for my property as that's what I'm familiar with, and you can imagine the other small inns and B and Bs are similar. I pay mortgages of many thousands of dollars each month to our local bank, First Community, which helps them further grow and prosper our community. I pay insurance, uh, on all my properties with a local building insurance agent. Uh, I pay commercial property taxes, which would make many of you fall over if you saw my property tax bills. As a small inn that serves a lot of food, I'm at Pig and Wiggly so often it feels like my second home. I've added a lot of plants, uh, uh, and pumpkins and greenery for the winter, for Murphy's Gardens, to keep my properties looking great. Then I take my money downtown and use it on our local businesses to furnish, design, and partner with a number of businesses to create a win-win for everyone. Further, the small inns and B and Bs are organized, and we make up the bed and breakfast of Galena Organization, which I am proud to be a member of since before I opened ten years ago. This group meets once a month, and we bring in speakers, volunteers, create fundraisers, or we give money back to local charity organizations. Individually, I'm grateful to contribute my time and it's out of a number of, of boards here in Galena and continue to do so as well. The inn is a proud member of the Galena Chamber, the Galena Downtown Business Association, the Galena Historical Society, the Galena Arts, the Joe Davis County Conservation Foundation, and probably others I'm forgetting. Additionally, Jail Hill Inn sponsors a number of charity events throughout the year, uh, throughout the area each year through financial contributions, overnight stays, baking cakes, you name it. And all of this is only possible because of the guests that stay in those six rooms at Jail Hill. It's pretty incredible, really. Uh, the dedication and following with the Jail Hill guests for the last ten years shows what happens when you truly put your heart and soul into something and it reciprocates. I'm not the one to thank, and it is every guest that has stayed at Jail, uh, that has chosen Jail Hill for their special Galena getaway. My home purchase and remodel at four oh seven Meeker would not have been possible without those guests. And the purchase of four eleven Meeker would not have been possible without those guests. Additionally, the awards and accolades the property has received over the last ten years from being named number one inn in America by TripAdvisor, number two in the world in two thousand nineteen, to being, uh, the only four diamond property in Galena by AAA for the last three years, and being named innkeeper of the year by Select Registry doesn't just happen. There is a lot of blood and sweat and tears with all of it. Finally, I would like to talk about, uh, buildings in the historic district being used as additional lodging possibly happening throughout Galena. Galena is not a cookie cutter town, and everything has to be looked at individually. And that's why we have the zoning board, the HPC, and the city council. And let me tell you, running a small inn is, is not for wimps. It's, um, and, and all of you, uh, probably know that. Uh, being an innkeeper, as I have been for twenty-three years, is a lifestyle type of business and takes devoted, passionate people to do this work. And they aren't just going to wake up one day and say, hey, I wanna start a small inn. Uh, for further reference, uh, I think, for further reference, uh, you may have seen the recent, uh, Fall Winter Galenian, uh, where I'm featured, uh, want your own B and B. Uh, my first quote in the article, uh, is, guests may dream of owning your bed and breakfast, and let me talk you out of it. Jail Hill Inn is not something that can be created overnight or even replicated the way the three, all three of my properties, uh, located on that hill. Uh, for me, it's my whole life and has never been a get rich quick scheme and never will be. It's about being passionate about this town and everything we have, uh, we all have and the importance of assisting, the ability for those looking to further succeed and strengthen their small businesses in a mindful and targeted way. Uh, when something works, it shows, and it shows brightly. And I hope my request tonight, my background and story and the wonderful future that is ahead of all of us, not just me, but our whole community, has been shared with you tonight. Thanks for your time and all the good.
Any questions from Matt? Go ahead, Phil.
Apparently, in two thousand twenty-one, you were granted a seventh room?
Yes.
And you're using that now, but not as accommodations?
Not, um, uh, yeah, it's, it's a massage, uh, space slash ADA accommodation. So, and I only operate out of six rooms, so if that would be, if that were to be used, I would not occupy one of the other rooms.
So the pressure, um, you know my question, the pressure to use that for occupancy, isn't there?
Neither for, for an ADA accommodation, there, I don't get a lot of requests, correct? So I.
Oh, it is for overnight stays for handicap?
It would be, yes. Right, since I was, by the stages of knowing when I did the, the whole project, I had to have an ADA accommodation. And it's there, it's all certified and everything, uh, but there's, there's just not a lot of requests for it.
That's good.
So I focus on my six, uh, six rooms.
Yeah.
Upstairs.
Again, your, uh, original petition that was granted was twenty fourteen?
Uh, for the small inn license?
Yeah, you said you appeared before this very body.
Correct.
Was that twenty fourteen?
Twenty fifteen, March of two thousand fifteen, when I, I bought the property in January of fifteen and then came to this board in February to ask for the.
Somewhere, February. And at that time, the ordinance was amended for building singular in twenty fourteen or something like that. Is that right?
I don't believe that's accurate now. It was building then. He got a variance for his parking.
Yeah, but the building, okay, it was building singular even prior to twenty fourteen.
Yes.
I don't know if either one of us remember this conversation we had on the phone. This issue of small inns was, the text was developed from two thousand five to twenty fourteen.
Couple amendments, yeah.
I don't know. There was several incremental text amendments on this issue of small inns. I don't know what year it raised the question, from twenty fourteen or two thousand five. What's different now? Because we have the same, so far, the same comprehensive plan and the same ordinance, building singular, what's different now in Galena?
In, in what regards?
Congrants of plan, which is the same, um, or the demand for guest accommodations or any of that?
Oh, certainly the demand for guest accommodations. I mean, my occupancy. I mean, I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't see that there was occupancy and, and opportunity to, um, uh, to grow and strengthen. I mean, not just my business as, as I just spelled out here.
Yeah.
But the whole, the whole community. And, and it's a, we're, and it's for me and this possibility, and it's literally the only, only way I can expand my, my business, uh, certainly. Uh, so I'm doing it at a, a calculated and very small, uh, two, potentially two rooms. I mean, that's not what's before us tonight, though.
Right. Could you add to the north of the third floor?
No. Because, to me, that's, there's a, there's a, a thirty-foot rock wall, and then the deck goes out beyond it, and then the property lines are very tight back there, um, with the city and then, uh, my neighbors.
It is a little, yeah.
As, as well, plus access, uh, back there is, is complicated because that Harrison Street was abandoned. Yeah, it's a dirt path if you walk.
Well, just kind of a point of order here. Um, the request tonight isn't for him to amend his inn. The request is for a text amendment. That's it.
But, and, and the text amendment refers to building and buildings?
Correct. Not so much his specific business, and we seem to be focusing on his specific business. I agree, building buildings is a distinction. But I just don't wanna get this public hearing turned into we're focusing on whether we're going to grant Matt Carroll a special use permit.
That'd be a separate.
That's not what we're here for.
Point taken.
Okay.
But again, what is the difference in Galena now for my colleagues here? Let me ask you. What is the difference in Galena now in the need for multiple buildings for small inns? That wasn't that way in two thousand five or two thousand fourteen?
I think in order for us to have a discussion, we actually have.
We have to have. I think that's for a discussion when you go. Right now, it's, does anybody have a question of Matt?
Thanks, Matt.
Anybody else have a question from Matt?
So, man, I'll ask the, the, a question. In the, in the first, um, requirement or things to consider, uh, for a, um, text amendment is whether or not the existing text or zoning designation was an error at the time of adoption. So would you say that possibly that this language should have been? I mean, and that, that there is a question, was there an error when we wrote this? Did we miss something early on? In other words, should this have been here all the time?
Yeah, and that's a great question. And some of that is, like, when did these, these other, um, B and Bs, which, which we have some of them listed there? The Palmer's Guest House has a cottage in the back, Chlorine has a, has a cottage. So I don't know the exact years that those were, were added on, certainly. And yeah, I mean, I've, uh, never felt that, that, that it was made an error, certainly. Uh, I mean, what I'm attempting to do is just update the language, uh, to cover what we already, what's already existing among us, uh, certainly, and then look at opportunities, um, uh, which I hope I, I can be allowed that, uh, at some point, uh, to see if, if there's, uh, ways to, um, uh, to, um, allow that in the, in the future as well. So that's, that's my reason.
Any other questions?
No.
We can take it from the public, right?
Well, at this point, it's questions of Matt, yeah. And then.
Well, can anybody ask him questions now?
Not yet.
Not yet. There's a time for that.
Okay. So there's nothing else?
Now, anyone and who else is in favor, right?
Right.
We have to go through everybody.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the request?
Adam Johnson through Eleven Fourth Street. I'm helping Matt with the application. And I, I think I'll start with your point, Jim. I think, uh, maybe it wasn't an error, but maybe it wasn't foresighted enough to understand. I think one of the things with, uh, uh, building like Matt's or other, uh, historic buildings that are certain type. Matt has, uh, a building that's kinda shoehorned him into a certain type of room, and, uh, he's, he's got pretty much suites, but he doesn't have, like, uh, uh, group room, gathering room, a room that can accommodate a family and, you know, uh, two bedrooms with a, uh, a common living area. And I think, uh, initially, uh, when we're thinking about, uh, uh, using these historic buildings, uh, you think about how to use the building itself. But once we get to that small inns place where the building has become a small inn, then we wanna figure out how to keep it evolving into a, a business that evolves with the times. And I think maybe the thing that has changed, uh, over the years has been the, the ability for Galena to provide more accessibility and more different kind of, uh, lodging accommodation situations. So, uh, I think Galena has evolved somewhat in that. And I think, uh, uh, you can look at these other small inns that have multiple buildings, and you can see specifically kind of how that extra space and that different kind of lodging situation can help promote the business and help, uh, help, uh, provide it with other opportunities in lodging. I, I, to speak to the text amendment, I think, uh, again, it's, it's kinda minor, a few. Now, we're going from building to buildings and sites to sites. But I think the process that you go through to, uh, evaluate this small inn, uh, decide whether, uh, special use is merited is still the same. We're still looking at, uh, uh, whether the, the property merits this kinda status. We're not opening it up to, uh, just kind of, uh, taking away that kind of, uh, evaluation that you have. And then the, the process still ends in a special use, which still gives you the ability to, uh, uh, police that use and make sure that it's being, uh, uh, faithful to the, uh, qualifications that require of it. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, I guess those are my three points is, you know, I think. But, but having, having these, uh, uh, larger historic buildings, I think you have to have some kind of ability to, uh, evaluate whether they're kinda shoehorned into not being able to grow and, and, uh, not being able to kind of evolve their kind of service where they see it. Matt sees this as, as something that would improve his business and improve the small in there. And I think, uh, we should be able to evaluate that, listen to that, and decide whether that's a benefit for the city. So, any questions?
Any questions, Adam?
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Anyone else to speak in favor? State your name and address, please.
How's it going? Jack Dieter, three fourteen Third Street. And I also am in favor of the text amendment or the, uh, change of the text. A lot of us, uh, maybe some don't like to, let me think about that for a second. Uh, and I hear my dad in the back saying, slow down and think. Um, some of us would like the opportunity to grow our businesses. And if you have a small inn and you have an opportunity to let it, uh, to. Public speaking isn't my forte either. But if you're able, if you have the opportunity to grow the business and get more people in and through and bring more people to Galena and give them a better experience, certainly Matt has wanted to do it, and I think it'd be a good idea to change it and, uh, let them do it and let others do it too, possibly.
Any questions?
I hope not.
You go. Otherwise, you did it.
It's all right, Jack.
Out in public, stay.
You did this fine, man.
I gotta waste it all.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Brian Taylor, five point four South Dodge Street. We also own two shops on Main Street as well as a building. And we also started our business about two thousand fourteen, right when Matthew was starting to remodel the jail hill. And I can tell you the impact that he's personally had to our business is substantial. Having a facility like that and close to downtown, walkable, that you can charge what he can charge for a room, to be honest, draws a certain customer to our Main Street. And that's important to us. And that is one of the competitive advantages that we have, that you can take these old facilities that people love and turn it into a place where people can really enjoy staying. And Matthew's not running an Airbnb, he's running an inn. And when he comes in, as he does three, four times a week to pick up cheese, trampers, we do the cheese trampers for him, he is providing a personal touch to this that you can't get in other places. That is a unique competitive advantage that Galena has that a lot of other communities cannot offer. And to get that that close to downtown is amazing for a business like ours. It alleviates the parking situation. It alleviates, what do I do with my big family? What do I do when I have kids? What do I do when I need to have a nice weekend with my wife? And, you know, we want a hot tub in our room. There's only certain locations that can do that, that have the space of it and still enjoy it being part of a historic town. And that is one of the reasons I was, when Matthew said it, I was like, that's great. I see a vision. I didn't even know that this was going to be an issue. And he said, well, this is what we've got to do because there's other places in Galena that are operating that have been, I'd say, excellent members of this community that haven't caused any problems by having multiple buildings around a facility that's operating as an inn. It just seemed like a a pretty simple thing for us. I hope you guys do consider this. If it's unique to Matt, it probably would be a larger opening for this type of thing. But at the end of the day, Matthew has executed everything he has done perfectly. He has preserved the history of this town. He presents an amazing experience for the people that come into this town. He draws a certain clientele that every person on Main Street enjoys seeing those people walk through their front doors. And I would love it if he could grow and execute that for even a couple more rooms. That would be great for our community. It'd be certainly great for our business. And I sure hope that you guys positively consider his request.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Nate Golick, two oh nine Southwest Street. To this town, it's common to Brian's earlier, I just want to start by saying, there's other properties that have buildings that are in the small end. I think I want to say the Greenbrier before Bill sold and then I know where I work at Hotel Galena, we have two separate portals there. So I think adopting the amendment just kind of updates it to your current standard or whatnot. But the Galena zoning board, I am here in support of Matthew's proposed amendment to the city ordinance regarding the small ends of Bed and Breakfast. Preserving Galena's historic charm while allowing local businesses to grow sustainably is essential, and the proposal achieves that balance. As a dedicated entrepreneur running for Galena, I understand the importance of preserving the historic charm of our community while also ensuring that our local businesses can thrive in a moderate and sustainable way. This is not just about one business, it's about the future of Galena's hospitality industry and ensuring our town remains a premier destination and a business-friendly government with a business-friendly governing body. Matthew, as the owner of the nationally recognized Jail Hill Inn, has brought tremendous visibility and economic benefit to our community, as others have stated. His commitment to excellence has enhanced Galena's reputation, drawn visitors who support local businesses. His establishment has received numerous prestigious awards and has been consistently ranked among the best Bed and Breakfast nationwide. These accolades are not just his achievement, they are Galena's achievement. His success is Galena's success. Consider the man requesting the change. Jail Hill Inn has been a clear benefit to Galena, aligning with the very language of the ordinance that states, quote, whereby a special use would benefit the city and surrounding area. I repeat, a benefit to the city and the surrounding area. I think many people have spoke to that tonight. Not approving this amendment would deny the undeniable contributions of Matthew and his business to our downtown. The amendment he proposes is a small but meaningful update, ensuring that small ends and B and Bs responsibly expand while remaining owner occupied. This is not about vacation rentals, it's about strengthening Galena's unique lodging landscape. His request does not introduce a loophole to vacation rentals, but rather supports the responsible expansion of well-established existing small ends, ensuring that the owners remain actively involved onsite and most importantly, in Galena. We cannot be short-sighted. Galena thrives because of its small business, and we must support entrepreneurs like Matthew who invest in our community. Unlike many vacation rentals, this is an owner-led business rooted here, operated here, and benefiting Galena directly. Small ends and Bed and Breakfast are the backbone of our tourism economy. We live here, many vacation rental owners do not. This is different. This amendment allows a successful, well-respected small inn to responsibly expand under the careful management of its owner to an existing structure. If we want the next generation of business owners to stay and invest here, we must foster growth, not stifle it. If Galena isn't friendly to local businesses that supports the tourism economy, we have nothing. The text amendment benefits Galena today, tomorrow, and for years to come. I strongly encourage the zoning board to approve it and support the continued success of small ends and B and Bs in our community. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? State your name and address for the record, please.
Craig Brown, seven five seven Dewey. And I am terrified of public speaking.
Oh, yes.
So you're going to keep it short?
I'll do that. Mr. Bransky, the ordinance was written wrong. We already had probably five exceptions to it at the time it was written. It should have never been written that way. When you look around at other historic towns, Savannah, Charleston, Madison, Chicago, New Orleans, the historic areas, they all have coach houses, they all have economically viable outbuildings, they should all be able to qualify for small end, the main building does. I am in it for the historic restoration and the economic viability. His ability to have a couple extra rooms in a different place guarantees me that that building is going to be in beautiful shape for years to come. So I'll just admit to that bias. That's why I'm here. I also support Matt Carroll. What he's done is exceptional. We've given him awards for it. He's deserved every one of them. But that has more to do with the special use meeting that we have down the road. The meeting today is about the text amendment. It was wrong at the beginning and should be corrected now. And I'll say to Joe and to Jonathan, the devil's in the enforcement. When I've read it, I've read the proposed amendment three times. I've been thinking about it. Is there room for shenanigans? Is there room for workarounds for people that are that think that way? I think there is. And it's just going to come down to how the deals, the the details are dealt with and how you choose to enforce it. Because I I don't doubt somebody will try to use it to sneak an Airbnb or something in there that is not designed for this. So I would only ask that enforcement be paid attention to, and otherwise, I am in favor of the text amendment.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Mark Packer, six oh six Dewey Avenue. I guess I just want to say ditto for everything that everybody has said. Matthew runs a wonderful business. I think that all of the texts should be looked at to make sure that, you know, there aren't weaknesses in it, etc., and have it be brought up to date. At the Chamber of Commerce, of course, you know, I'm all about commerce. So anything we can do to bring this type of business into our community and keep it growing and keep those kinds of businesses growing in our community, the better our community will be for generations to come. And if I, and that's what I go back, is like, what's going to happen to my children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren? You know, our our community is getting older and we need to make sure that these young people that are are doing these businesses and stuff are very successful. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks, bud. Any questions, Bart? Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? Take your time.
I may have combined. I have handouts as well for everybody, so if you want to just pass these around, Jonathan?
Make sure you state your name and address, would you?
My name is Bill Grossans, and my wife and I live at four eighteen Harrison Street, Galena. The handouts that I'm giving you are really in two parts. You basically a staple piece, and then there's some attachments that I'll give you for exhibits. And I might, as I go along with this, I I was here back in December when this is going to be a concept matter. And my issue then was is because Matthew just had purchased four eleven Meeker Street, and he wants to turn it into a two-bedroom extension of the Jail Hill Inn. So I may speak to some of that, even though I know we're here for a text amendment, I think it all plays in together. If you think it's not, then please stop me along the way, and I will then continue down the road. So our property is accessed from Soldier Monument Road and abuts the entirety of the Jail Hill Inn property, the private residence of the Jail Hill Inn owner, as well as a significant portion of four eleven North Meeker, the property that Matthew has just purchased and wants to make into a two-bedroom extension of his inn. I addressed the zoning board back in December of twenty twenty-four, and this matter was before you as a concept plan. I spoke in opposition to the concept of a zoning variance at that time to make it part of the of the inn. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the proposed text amendment changes that would allow four eleven Meeker to be considered a two-room extension of the Jail Hill Inn. I am not that grumpy old next-door neighbor shaking my fist, yelling at the top of my lung, not in my backyard. In fact, I spoke in favor back in twenty fifteen at the ZBA meeting in favor of Mr. Carroll converting the former jail into a small inn. This proposed text amendment has legal, serious legal health, serious legal and health and safety concerns. Mr. Carroll's request is no more than a carving out of the exception of the city's maximum limit of twenty permits and licenses for short-term vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods for which there are no current licenses available. The city has limited the number of short-term rentals in order to preserve and protect the character of residential neighborhoods. City Code one one two oh two states that only five licenses are allowed within a twenty-five point eight-three acre circular area. Galena's zoning administrator, Jonathan Miller, has determined that seven guest amendments, guest accommodations already exist within the twenty-five point eight-three acre circle around four eleven. In your first attachment, I have those seven listed and from Jonathan Miller. There is also a very significant waitlist for short-term rentals in this city, and I'll get back to that in a few minutes. So if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Mr. Carroll's text amendment request creates a short-term vacation rental disguised as a two-room extension of a small inn. The property in question, four eleven, is not even on the same one hundred block of of the Jail Hill Inn. The same amenities offered at the Jail Hill Inn would not extend to the guests at four eleven. Guests at the Jail Hill Inn have their beds and rooms freshened daily by the Jail Hill Inn staff, are served breakfast in the dining room on the first floor, and are provided an afternoon snack tray and a glass of wine. The guests at four eleven would not have, the Jail Hill Inn staff freshen their rooms daily, would be responsible for their own meals, and would not receive an afternoon snack tray. As stated earlier, in twenty twenty-one, Mr. Carroll requested the ZBA to approve a special use permit for him to add a seventh guest room to the existing six rooms at the Jail Hill Inn. And I have attached there. And in fact, I highlighted at the end, the guest room will be ADA accessible accommodation, which he's talking about. That room was previously used as Mr. Carroll's bedroom and was also designated as the End's American with Disabilities Act guest accommodation. When Mr. Carroll acquired and renovated the house at four oh seven North Meeker, he moved out of the Jail Hill Inn and into four oh seven. The ZBA approved the addition of the seventh guest room to serve also as an ADA guest room at the Jail Hill Inn, both as Mr. Carroll had requested. He never acted on making it a seventh room, but instead made it made it into a massage and spa room and C attached. In fact, from his own newsletter, he states, many of you know, suite one oh one on the first floor of the inn was my home for seven point five years, and now has been completely overhauled and has been turned into a luxurious and serene space for relaxation and pampering of our guests. I do have a copy of also the picture. It's a little bit of how the ADA is going to be used for the massage room. In the city's code regarding small ends, it clearly states in part, in the case of non-residential structures, the number of guest rooms will be determined by the size of the building and the regulations for such use follow in the city's adopted building codes, life safety and fire codes, electrical codes, and Americans with Disabilities Act. Mr. Miller's, in Mr. Miller's memo to the ZBA, he writes, the proposed seventh room is currently being used as a massage room and ADA room in the event that it is requested or needed. I don't know how this ADA requirement is or will be met, since the room has been, as described by Mr. Carroll, completely overhauled and has been turned into a luxurious, spacious, serene space for relaxation and pampering of our guests. It certainly was understandable as an ADA room when he lived there and also when this body here approved the seventh room, because both would have had beds and accompanied bedroom furniture.
Just kind of a point of order here. I know when when Matt made his presentation, he referred to the jail inn too, when we gave him some leeway. And we're going to give that to you too. But you seem to be completely focused just on the jail inn versus the text amendment. The issue here is a text amendment, not what was previously approved for Mr. Carroll or potentially approved, okay?
I also know that the reason it's all here is because of four eleven.
I understand that, but that's going to come back for another hearing. And you'll have a chance to address all that.
It is, but I think it's important as to where this is going.
I understand, but just stay focused on the testament. Thank you.
And I've just got a couple more things that I really want to make sure I put out there. But the bottom line is, he could have been operating the seventh room since twenty twenty-one, chose not to do so. So let's, let me address the things that you have to address or consider, those seven or six items. Number one, whether the existing text or zoning designation was an error at the time of the adoption. Mr. Carroll acknowledges that the zoning text was not an error at the time of the adoption, but then argues that it was not, did not address the existing multi-building small ends. One fifty-four forty-six of the of the city ordinances was originally adopted in April of two thousand and five. Three, and this is, I'm going to get into something that Mr. Miller had in his memo, three of the four small ins cited in the zoning administrator Miller's memorandum to the ZBA dated January twenty-first that are currently operating with multiple buildings. He mentions the Palmer Guest House on Spring Street, Ryan's Mansion on U.S. Highway twenty, and the Hotel Galena and Riverboat Suites on Spring Street. Were all doing business before the adoption of the current city code, according to the former city administrator Mark Moran. One could argue that the current code was adopted specifically to limit something that was occurring, was not desired, and needed to be regulated. Why else establish an ordinance after other ends were already doing this? The four small ins cited in the memo, Lauren Mansion on Franklin Street, received approval from the ZBA to use a separate building as a single guest room on that same property in two thousand and six, nineteen years ago. And I have an attachment there. And on the second page of that attachment, it shows that the owner at the time came forward and made this request only after the owner converted their living space to the lower level of the main house for wheelchair-accessible suite, the rezoning of the property to neighborhood commercial, and the creation of the current amendment to the ordinance defining small ends. The change was made using the current code. The separate building in the Chlorine is accessed via the same driveway and is about fifty feet from the main building. Mr. Carroll is seeking to add the sentence in the code, the small inn shall be contained on lands that share a common boundary with common ownership. This is problematic in two ways. One, it does not limit the number of properties with common boundaries, which could create a hopscotch of guest accommodations. And two, using Mr. Carroll's argument. And two, using Mr. Carroll's argument and the zoning text at the time, did not address multi-building small inns that he and others could later request a text amendment to change the number of guest accommodations for small inns. This is exactly what I'm saying in the first point. It can't be both ways. If the zoning was not in error, then his so-called failure to address the multi-building small inns is simply an incorrect argument. It didn't address them on purpose because it specifically defines small inns as being a single building. Number two, whether there's been a change in character in the area or throughout the city due to the installation of public facilities, other zoning changes, new growth trends, deterioration, development, and transactions. The question is geared whether there is a change in character that creates a need or basically makes the extent of existing zoning no longer a reasonable or sensible step. An example would be along Highway 20. It would no longer make sense for the area around Ryan Mansion or the residence north of Ramada Inn to be zoned residential, given the commercial and industrial growth assigned to that area by the comprehensive plan and by subsequent zoning. There is nothing in the area of Meeker Street that is similar. It's the same it has always been, a residential area. The Jail Hill Inn, formerly the county jail, went from housing prisoners to housing guests, not functionally that different. Mr. Carroll cites that the change of character suggests that the text amendment is a growth trend of the continued success of small inns and small inns with multiple buildings. I'm not quite sure what this means, as he does not cite any statistics or provide any evidence. As previously stated previously, the only addition or change to any of the small inns in Mr. Miller's memo was 19 years ago. Further, three of the small inns with multiple buildings, the Ryan Mansion, Farmer's Guest House, and Chloron Mansion, had these other guest accommodations on the same property of the principal structure. The fourth, Galena Hotel and Riverboat Suites, has both buildings adjoining each other. Just because inns are successful does not mean there is a need to change the ordinance to accommodate an individual owner's request. That's not logical. And Mr. Carroll is saying is that other people make money at this and so must I. That may be a change in personal character, but it does not a community or neighborhood change. There has been no change in character in the area of 411 Meeker. It's the same it has always been, a residential area. As the small inns identified in Mr. Miller's memorandum and ZBA are not residential areas. The Chloron is across the street from the Galena Primary School with businesses on either side. Vetted Dairy Clinic on one side, Muleps on the other, and is also on the main thoroughfare in the town on Franklin Street. The Ryan Mansion is on the far northeast end of US Highway 20, surrounded by numerous businesses, two large banks, another bank, two large hotels, excuse me, a bank, and other businesses. The Farmer's Guest House and the Hotel Galena and Riverboat Suites are also on US 20, both near Main Street intersection, controlled by stop and go lights, pedestrian walk signs, and sidewalks. There are only three houses with access from Soldier Monument Road. It is a private secluded area on a single lane. Dead-end road marked by the entrance, no outlet, and I have a picture of that in my items to you. Meeker Street is a single-lane road with no sidewalks marked with a signage limiting speed to 15 miles an hour. I have photos for that. There certainly hasn't been any rising growth trends regarding guest occupancy. The recent annual occupancy rates have stayed stable at about 50%. And I have listed from 2021 all the way to 2024 those occupancy rates. And I won't even mention my last comment there because it was specifically just for other. Number three, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district or whether there may be adverse impacts on the capacity or safety of a portion of the street's network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems, or environmental impact of the new zone may generate such extensive water runoff, water, air, and noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuisance. Mr. Carroll writes in part in his application that the text amendment is compatible with low-density districts because small inns with multiple buildings have not had an adverse impact on the surrounding area. This is a false comparison. Not one of the small inns with the multiple buildings listed in Mr. Miller's memo is an exclusively residential area. In fact, they are in busy commercial areas and heavily trafficked roads. The text amendment is not compatible pursuant to the city's limit on short-term vacation rentals, which is concerned with the integrity of neighborhoods. The city only allows five STR licenses within a 25.83 acre circular area. As previously stated, there are already seven STRs around 411 Meeker Street. There is a significant waitlist for STRs and I ask that you please take a look at that. This is what I'm talking about. There are over 115 people or properties listed on this waitlist for residential. And there are a number of other commercial, this colored area that I've seen in that, but all of them have been approved. Granted, Mr. Carroll's text amendment request would be a slap in the face to the property owners who are abiding by the city ordinance and the spirit of their existence. This is an active list. Mr. Miller informed me that one additional property was just recently added to the residential waitlist. As previously stated, Meeker Street is a one-lane street with signage on each, limiting the speed limit to 15 miles an hour and alerting drivers to one-lane rule. My next question is about how people would live at 411. Now is that something that I would have for the text to the?
Special use permit?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so I will ignore that piece next, okay? I'll go number four, which would be on page six. Whether the proposal is in conformance with and in further implementation of the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan, other adopted plans, and the policies, intents, and requirements of the code and other city regulations. The comprehensive plan's over 20 years old and is in further implementation, excuse me, and is currently undergoing a major rewriting. Two of the ZBA members, Einzweiler and Monahan, are on the planning commission overseeing this vigorous process. In the fall of 2024, as part of the process to renew the city's comprehensive plan, there were a number of focus groups made up of city residents and property owners, business owners and operators, school staff and students, major employers, nonprofit and local regional organizations, city staff who identified major issues to be addressed. Participants in all those focus groups indicated, and I do have copies of those documents. This is from the website on the planning commission. And in here it says, very at the very bottom, both the key stakeholders and here they are, that it states, "Short-term rental impacts." Participants in all focus groups highlighted the impact of short-term rentals, noting a decline in rental housing stock, increased property values, and rental costs. Many emphasized the lack of housing on the workforce, young professionals and families, with existing units being repurposed as short-term rentals and Airbnbs. The number of short-term rentals was identified as a challenge for both residents and workers to find homes. They also, in their visioning workshop summary, stated, "Participants also noted a shortage of housing due to high numbers of vacation rentals." They suggested limiting vacation rentals to help ease housing availability. This, stop on page seven top, this text amendment change, this text amendment change request is a direct affront to the concerns of the numerous listed above. A new vibrant comprehensive plan is only months from completion and enactment. Number five, whether adequate public facilities and services are available. And again, I think this gets into, if you get to, you approve this and it gets to a special use permit. The next is whether there's adequate supply of land available to the subject area's surrounding community net to accommodate the zoning and community needs. This question is asking the ZBA to evaluate existing land use data, projected development needs, and zoning regulations in the affected area to determine whether there is enough suitable land available in the entire community to meet current and future requirements. In other words, do we need to change, to change the zoning here because we don't have enough area elsewhere that is zoned properly to accommodate this use? The answer is clearly that Galena does not need to make the zoning change because there is more than enough area zoned and available for lodging, including small inns and STRs. And as stated previously, guest accommodation occupancy rates in this area have been less than 50% for years. Number seven, whether there's a need in the community for a proposal and whether there will be benefits derived by the community in the area of the proposed rezoning. It's just the opposite. The citizens of Galena, business owners and operators, civic and community leaders, students and stool staff, nonprofit, local and regional organizations, and others have spoken clearly that short-term vacation rentals is a significant reason for decline in rental and affordable housing stock. Mr. Carroll suggests that the public need is reflected in the existence of existing small inns that already comprise multiple buildings. With larger historic buildings at the core, many small inns have shown financial benefits of incorporating additional buildings into the business to change the mix of accommodations and provide accessibility, which can be difficult with historic buildings. First of all, three of the four current small inns with multiple buildings listed in Mr. Miller's memo have all been doing it for more than 20 years. Before the ordinance was adopted, only one has been there for less than 19. Second, there have been four small, second, three of the four small inns are doing it on the same property as the principal building. The other is next door. And third, most importantly, Mr. Carroll, in his write-up, admits that he is seeking this amendment to operate an STR at 411 Meeker. He stated to change the mix of accommodation. Mr. Carroll basically is saying there's a public need because other people are doing it. That is not an actual argument and doesn't demonstrate need. What happened in fact is that after these other places were created, the city developed and passed an ordinance defined small inn more carefully and specifically to mean a single building. That shows the opposite of what he is trying to argue. Similarly, Galena limited STRs after they had started having an impact, clearly showing that there is also no need to allow someone to operate one regardless of what they're trying to call it. In conclusion, this is not a popularity contest. Whether or not you know and like Mr. Carroll should not be the reason to make this request to text amendment. Also, he will not be the owner of the property forever and the city needs to look at not the current owner, but look at it as simply a business. An exception to the limit of 20 STRs and no more than five vacation rentals in a 25.3 acre circular area should not be made to accommodate him and his less than four-month ownership of 411 Meeker. There is also the precedent, if he is allowed to change the ordinance simply to do something he wants to do for his business, but for which there are clearly no need and that will clearly have negative impact on the surrounding area, then what's to stop him, every other owner, from annexing the house next door and trying to turn it into an extension of a small inn? He should, and it goes on about the 411 being in the queue. So I know I talked a lot about 411, but I remember being here in December and that was the whole purpose, bringing that matter forward and I think this, I know, starts with a text amendment, but ultimately if you approve it, the next step is to make 411 into a, I will say, an STR and not just a two-room extension of this inn. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
Jail Hill Inn notwithstanding, can you see any situation where the board might derive benefit by having flexibility to having two buildings on the same property that are, one's an extension of a small inn?
So you say the same property, do you mean the principal inn is, or you mean?
I mean, I mean with the language, the way it's written, let's, let's, I mean seriously, we cannot be talking about Jail Hill Inn here because that, you know, that application has to come in and has to go through a very rigorous process of getting a special use permit, which, and if you look in the ordinance, you can only get a small inn in this town and there are six districts you can do it in and then only by special use permit, which means you have to meet a series of very stringent conditions to even get to that point. My question for you is, in the general term, do you see, can you envision, or do you, could you understand why there might be flexibility that the board could have? Where there might be a situation where I, like again, not talking about Jail Hill Inn, but there may be other places in town. It's a very idiosyncratic textual place. And so a lot of situations come up that don't get covered in zoning ordinance because it's impossible to write language that, that does everything for Galena, that covers everything in Galena. So can you see that, can you see where the board might get flexibility from having that text amendment to allow us to make good decisions in the future?
You know, this has been going on for 20 years. There hasn't been, so in that 20 years for other inns, I haven't seen where that's been an issue, except in the Chloron, 19 years ago, they made a request. The other ones were already existing. So, you know, I don't run it in, I don't, I'm only here to talk about what I experienced in December and I, at this point, I would say I don't see where that need exists.
And let me ask you the second question. Do you see a benefit to a community like Galena to bring its ordinances in line with the conditions that are existing? In other words, not, you know, we have grandfather uses that were written before the ordinance. Is there not a benefit to trying to modify those ordinances so those things are in line, as long as they don't create problems?
Well, I came to the last comprehensive board oversight board Steve's on and what I understood from the presenter was that once the comprehensive plan is done, ordinance is followed. So I would argue that we wait till the comprehensive plan is done and then we look at it at that point. It's only months away. We're not, it's close. I think what she said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I think that she said something around that might be this far, that it could be all done and ready to go.
I got one question and it's just that these hearings are supposed to be to lay out facts, you know? But you talk about that the occupancy of guest accommodations is less than 50%. Now is that covering all hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, everything?
From my understanding, it covers what the, like Galena country stuff, whatever, so it would be everybody, so.
So it's everybody in the county or just Galena? Because part of the?
Because I, because I think it's?
Part of the ordinance now talks about changes.
Right.
Okay, so when you put out the fact that less than 50%, where's that figure coming from?
I got it. I got it from an article that was in the Hush Report where he talked about?
So you can't really prove that it's fact?
No.
I mean, it's just somebody wrote, somebody else wrote it in an article?
Right, exactly.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
You cited the Hush Report?
I didn't. I cited only what he talked about with the occupancy rates.
That's all there is concern with?
I did not talk about anything else because what he was talking about, it wasn't in another report and he then said, "Here's the occupancy rates for those years." And there's been no funny telling, saying to me that it's not.
No, I just asked because you presented that as fact.
Right.
And I wanted to know where the fact came from and whether it is fact.
And that's where it came from.
That's all I need to know. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? State your name and address for the record.
Okay, so I came to talk about the zoning thing. So I believe like myself, most residents in Galena are generally supportive of growth and improvements in our town. But that said, it seems that we would prefer zoning ordinance to be followed or revised in a fair manner for everyone, not just one person or one corporation. I've heard a lot of testimony in favor of that Mr. Carroll's doing a great job. I toured the Jail Hill. It's beautiful. I think he does do a good job. But this shouldn't be about him and his property. Currently, our zoning ordinances specify that guest rooms shall, or small inns, shall provide six to eight rooms. He's approved for seven, but with a maximum of no more than 16 people. If these numbers are reduced to allow a property with one to two bedrooms, would the property still qualify as a small inn or would that now be a vocational, vacation rental? This is a key decision. This is a key reason why people are talking about it. The city has made it clear that small The city has made it clear that small inns would be limited to larger existing historical structure. A two-bedroom home probably does not fit that. So if a smaller family home is allowed to rent out rooms, doesn't that now be called a vacation rental and not a small inn? Additionally, the city has set clear guidelines in regarding to lot capacity. I think this directs kind of your question about growth and maybe more structures. But with that stating, it states that the lot must be able to absorb and impact the small inn operation. So that kind of addresses that if there's properties that are on the same lot, maybe it is more than one building, but it's not a whole block. In the definitions, the change to include fans that share a common boundary, doesn't that open up the possibility of entire blocks being considered one small inn? This would drastically change the care of neighborhoods and have an impact of all of our residents. Finally, I question how this, how all this and the current process for short-term rentals in Galena, isn't there a waiting list? Apparently, we see that waiting list, I've just heard about the waiting list, for vacation rentals. Would these changes allow one individual such as Mr. Carroll to bypass the progress and jump ahead of all the others that have been waiting their turn? These are important questions that need to be addressed to ensure fairness and consistency for all the residents of Galena. That's what I believe, I've heard it, and I think these little things have been written in our codes, building, buildings, number of people, number of rooms, for reasons over time. And they've worked, so I don't know why we want to change them unless it is for one person, which then we should not change it for one person.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions?
I didn't get her name or.
Bonnie, Bonnie Wall.
Oh, okay.
You know, kids went to school together.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, no questions, anyone else to speak in opposition? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Hang on, Matt, Matt, you have a chance to rebut or have a final word here if you got, if you don't have to, if you want to.
Well, I guess I'll maybe say a couple of things. Maybe if you weren't listening, but yeah, vacation rental properties operate under completely different ordinance. It's required by the owner to live on site, so this waiting list that we speak of, really based on the small inn license, which is what we're looking at tonight. I, I don't see, I completely disagree, obviously, about that. And then, also, some of the, I have kind of listed out what I do on my property with breakfast and there. I think some comments remain that guests will not receive various amenities that I know are going back to for a Meeker. But I'm just trying to say that that, all of that's incorrect. My guests will receive housekeeping, what, I mean, they're going to pay you a ton of money, obviously, so. Obviously, if you get that, yeah, it's not going to be a washout in the version of Jail Hill Inn.
Okay, now we can ask if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions of Matt or want to cross-examine Matt?
No.
I mean, anybody.
No, no, anybody in the audience have any questions of Matt? Or want to cross-examine him on anything he's testified to?
I see none.
Seeing none?
Now I entertain a motion to close the public here.
I will make a motion to close the public.
We have a second.
I'll say it.
About a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post fin here. All right, on to questions, gentlemen. On 25A-01, Matt Carroll requests for a text amendment proposing code of ordinance to amend section 154, 406D8, public accommodations, small inn.
So, just to get the ball rolling.
We'll need a motion on it.
Yeah, I make a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to allow the proposed text amendment to section 154, 406D8, public accommodations, small inns.
We have a second.
I'll say it.
We have a second, discussion.
Yeah, I do.
Oh, well, I, oh.
You're the one, you go ahead and start, you make the motion.
I think I have to start, sorry.
That's all right, man.
Um, a lot of great testimony and, but I believe, and we're going to go through the criteria because we have to, but can talk about it a little bit. But from my perspective, I, I believe that the zoning board works best when we have flexibility. Because, you know, we have other, we have other ordinances in place. When we're talking about a special use permit, there's a whole gauntlet of things that you have to go through in order to get a special use permit, and it's considerable, so a big, long list. And I, I like the idea that we have the flexibility to consider a singular situation on its own merits without having to worry about precedent being set in a different place or whatever, because every one of these projects is, is truly singular. And I, I have faith, and I trust zoning boards, and I have to trust future zoning boards, because we can't do zoning by fear, that they would make the same measured decisions that we would make on a special use permit. So when every one of these projects comes up in front of us, we will, we, we will give it the amount of time and consideration that it is required to make the right decision. And so, I know it's a, a little nuanced changing of words, but to me, that gives us more flexibility because there are so many unusual situations in Galena that typical Euclidean zoning just cannot cover. That I like when we get the ability to make decisions based on reason and logic and ordinance.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm speaking just based on the facts, okay? Not who's bringing this forward or anything, but I can't get over item number one of the approval criteria. This was not made in error. It explicitly stated, "Single," and they even grandfathered items in, meaning they wanted it this way. So I'm trying to understand how we would get over item number one, was this in error? When this was set up, and I, I can't get there.
Yeah, I would say it wasn't. I kind of disagree with you on that, because before this was written, there was other properties that were already doing what they're asking. I get it, but I don't believe when they wrote this, they were thinking about that. I just thought they wrote this to get it through 20 years ago. I never thought anybody else would ever do this, no big deal, because they're going to stay forever. You know, or they should have changed the law, the ordinance back then to say you can't have it. You know, and eliminate them, if that's really what they wanted, I don't believe that was what it was.
And I was part of that, I was part of that rewrite.
These were, you know, we're not talking about little joints here that were grandfathered in. We knew about that 20 years ago.
Yeah.
That's why I'm struggling with opening it up now.
But I can give you a little history, because I was there when we were doing it. And we had a zoning consultant from Madison, whoever they were from. And we went, and we went through the, you know, the ordinance, and there was so much. And we, we made decisions, a lot of old language came, a lot of things that have evolved since. My personal recollection is, I don't remember there being a, a conscious discussion of looking at that sentence and going, oh, that should be building or buildings. Because if you, even reading it, if you, if you don't read it close enough, you wouldn't be able to distinguish the difference, you would not, it would not come up to you what the difference would be. And I think what happens is, is as time goes on, and this is the beauty of, I think, our ordinance, as time goes on and we start to identify these, these really idiosyncratic and peculiar situations that come up in Galena, because they do. And they come up that we never could have visioned 20 years ago or 50 years ago. That we have the ability as a board to take in the new information and, and its context, okay? And, and say, look, we could make logical, rational decisions based on using this new language. And so, that, that's how I look at it, I look at it as something that does evolve.
How do you think we would actually see this come true though?
It, I, I know there are people, they say they worry about someone could, could, you know, take several residential lots in a row in median density residential and make them into a small inn.
They're going to have a special use permit.
But they're, every, every one of these is a special use permit, every single one of them. And so, that person would have to be able to come in front of this board. And so, what we're doing here is not by right giving anything to anybody. There's nothing in here that says by right you get to do this, that does not exist here. Every time that you, so if someone came in, I have seven lots or seven individual homes, I want to make a small inn, they're not going to meet the requirement.
They all have to come back here.
And they're not going to meet, and, and a board's not going to look at this and say that this meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. You know? And so, so I, I, I just, I have faith and I trust, because you have no choice, but to have the faith that, that future zoning boards are going to make, make decisions based that are, that are rational.
I too am struggling with buildings plural. And Jim, your history of this actually makes my point, or Steve's point. They did consider this multiple times from 2005 to 2014. How many times? Half a dozen times? Building was right there.
Yeah.
In singular form, excuse me.
Yeah, okay.
I think your argument about the multiplicity and the flexibility that did pass boards, I think that's wrong-headed for a zoning board to do things because they want flexibility. I think you follow the ordinance.
I know, but sometimes I don't believe you have everything in black and white yet. This is long, and there's a lot of times over the years I've been on here that we've been flexible for different things people requested, regardless of how many people were in this room objecting to it. But that's what makes a small town unique. This isn't the city of Chicago where I make the rule and you live by it. We all work together and have a little flexibility.
Don't, don't, you know, don't, don't mix flexibility with not following the ordinance. I mean, we follow the ordinance.
I know that.
The flexibility I'm talking about is the.
Go ahead.
Your argument about how the past boards probably missed this is not an argument I can accept based on your own history of multiple visits to this text.
Well, we haven't had multiple, that many multiple visits.
2005, 2014, and in between.
Have you read the entire zoning ordinance from stem to stem? Okay, so there, there's, there's, and, you know, I've been working with this ordinance for 21 years or whatever. And I'm just telling you, things still come up that surprise us.
Sure they do.
They still come up that surprise us, okay? And, and I think, I think if I, you know, if I'm trying to be rational and logical and I look at this and say, what would, what would I care if it's building or buildings? To me, there is a situation where two buildings together making a small inn makes perfect sense. There are times when it doesn't make sense, okay? But if it says in the language that it can't be two buildings, then we can never rule that it can be, ever. But if we have the flexibility that says, oh, I could see where it could be two buildings, because we already have that. So we're trying to bring it into compliance with that, perhaps. But if we don't, we don't say that, then there may be a situation that comes down the line that we'd say, wow, this was the perfect one for this, but sorry, can't do it, because we don't have the language.
See, I think, I think, no, if that's when this was first written, but to have had other properties with multiple buildings on them and allow them to go on and then say from now on, none, I don't, I think we need to go back and correct what was done incorrectly.
I'm saying that makes the argument for leaving it, because they, they saw what was there. And I thoroughly want to say too that a legal nonconformity, a grandfather, can't be used, can't be used, because it's a nonconformity, to make the ordinance conform. What happened, and they wrote an ordinance that didn't include that, it's grandfathered, but they deliberately didn't want more of them.
Yeah, I.
We, I can't get into their mind.
The only thing I can tell you, I was part of that group, and that was not, we did not.
For you.
Look, we, this is, I didn't like, you know, write the ordinance and say, okay, let's do it this way. There were groups of people who went through these sections, okay? We didn't say, oh, well, that, you know, there was no discussion about that language.
Hopefully, we're discussing it.
It was before I was on the zoning board when they did it, so I got to go by what you said.
I, I mean, it was.
I just think that.
I do remember others' discussions vividly, but I don't remember that one.
And I get what you say on flexibility, when I say we could change the rules, but sometimes you have to look at the, the ordinance, say, does it make sense? And should it be changed, just because it's been that way forever?
We just changed an ordinance last session.
A month ago, you changed an ordinance.
Yep.
We do that.
This is a different request, and I think requests stand alone.
So let me ask you the question.
Sometimes it makes sense.
Can, do you think that there was never a situation where the, that, do you think in Galena, and, you know, try to canvas the whole town, because it's going to be hard to do, do you think that there is, would never be a situation where you think it, where it's not okay? I mean, would ever be a situation where you would say, well, it, it just can never happen where we're going to have two buildings that are a small inn on the same property?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I know the map on the wall here, the low-density residential area is salmon in color. It's 50% or more of Galena. Tell me there isn't same ownership of contiguous lots. Some of them vacant, some of them with structures on them, different numbers of bedrooms, but less than eight, where it couldn't happen. I don't know.
But you have to go through, you have to go through the criteria for special use permits.
We're talking about a text amendment, not a special use.
Right, but in, no, we're talking about a text amendment that can only be, and then the text amendment can only result in a, in a, in a, in a small inn anywhere by special use. So you, we, we, we have to go through that gauntlet of special use permit requirements, and even the first one, 154914, the site review standards, okay? That's a huge list, you go through that, and it, and it has to meet all of these criteria.
To Jim, hypothetically, now I'm not talking about this request, but in the low-density residential district in Galena, where there may be contiguous properties, less than eight bedrooms, multiple structures, and we change it to buildings whereby special use, we could deny it.
By special, by, well, by special.
We change this?
No, 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 by special, you could only approve it by special use.
So we could deny the special use, and it's denied?
Denied, that's it.
Even though they have continuously owned property?
Continuously owned property is only one tiny part of what it means to get a special use permit. The text amendment is telling us what it is that we are allowing that can be allowed by special use, and then you have to go to the special use provisions.
We're just allowing them to apply for a special use permit if they have contiguous properties.
And I see it.
If someone comes.
As possible small inn measles.
It, you, you, if you go through, there's so many, there's so much criteria for what it means to get a special use permit. And, and it's, it's, it's not like you, you know.
This being approved doesn't give Mr. Carroll right tomorrow to do whatever he wants.
No.
Or anybody else.
He has to come back and.
He has to go through the special use.
If this gets through, when he, if he, if we get this, if this passes and it goes to the council and they approve it, Mr. Carroll's going to have to come back and run the gauntlet, which is, it's a pretty high bar.
The way I see it, if we approve this tonight, all we're doing is bringing back into conformity the places that are already operating with.
In my argument.
They're already in conformity.
But it also, you got to remember.
That's not an argument to change the ordinance.
Also, you got to remember, we're just putting that out basically like a proposal. It's still up to the city council as to prove, they're, they're the deciding factor, not us.
We're making a recommendation.
Yeah, well, Jim's explained to you, it still has to go through another process, even if the city council approves it. It still has to go through the special use.
I understand all that, but if it does go through and it's buildings, and other petitions come, not just Jail Hill Inn, others, that meet all the. and other petitions come, not just JALN, others that meet all the contiguous properties and all the rest.
No, it's not that way.
How would they be not approved?
It's not that way. You've, you've got to go through, you've got to go through the criteria.
But-
So in the criteria for a special use permit, okay? Number one, site plan review standards, all applicable site plan review criteria in 154914. That's like 15 items alone. Then you keep going, district standards, specific standards, availability of complimentary uses, compatibility of adjoining properties. So compatibility of adjoining properties. Is it compatible? Will it, I mean, this is hypothetical. Is it compatible?
I agree, that's coming, that's not tonight.
Okay, but that, that's the kind of things that it has to, that you have to go through to get a special use permit. You have to prove that it's compatible. You have to prove that you're protecting the privacy of the neighbors. You have to prove that you're protecting the use and enjoyment of the neighbors. All of that is in the special use provisions. That's why it's not easy to get a special use. So just because we allow this, all this does is it make it, makes it possible for us to consider it. And from my perspective, as a, as a person who's done, you know, done enough on, been around long enough on the zoning board, to know how many unique, and, and, and I use the word singular, and I think it's the right word, singular situations that are in this town. That flexibility to us, to me, gives us more power. It gives us, it gives us more ways to be, to, to be more considerate of what we're doing. And so I, I, I strongly believe that. I think the special use provisions in our ordinance are the most important thing that we have in our ordinance. All right.
Any other questions or, we discussed a lot on this and everybody's got to point out, so if nothing else, you read that criteria, Jim?
Yeah, okay. So this is interesting. The first one, uh, let me go back to the thing.
Well, what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that each member of the board addressed the seven criteria.
Okay, because it brings it up to each address, yes or no?
Yes, whether, or, or speak to the criteria.
Okay, so the first criteria is whether the existing text or zoning designation was in error at the time of adoption. And at first I was thinking it was, you know, that maybe it didn't apply because, remember, these are things that we have to consider. They do not have to, this is not like a variance where it says it has to be all of these things. You have to prove that it complies with all these. These, we are just, we have to consider each one of these, okay? Not to decide whether it's a yea or nay. So I'm going to make the case that I think that the, that the, that the, that the ordinance was an error and that it was, it was an error that just could not be foreseen until later on. So, and that, that's this point now. So that would be my argument.
Bill, your position on one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the fact that, uh, at the time, it may have been in an error and might need some updating.
My position is I believe it was an error. I don't think that they, and I don't know what your intent was, but I believe the way it's written was an error based on what was already in place at the time.
My position is I do not believe it was an error. I believe it was intended to be that way.
Uh, my position is it was an error and that they should have addressed it at the time that it's already facilities operating that way.
Yep.
I don't believe it was an error. And I've heard people say maybe and was, how do we ever know? Your argument that we won't know. I kind of want my cake and eat it too here. I don't know how we say it was an error. We don't know. We don't know.
Number two.
Whether there's been a change of character in the area or throughout the city due to installation of public facilities, other zone changes, new growth trends, deterioration, development, transitions, et cetera. I, I was going to say that this one probably is less applicable than the other six. I mean, we're not talking about a specific, remember, we're not talking about a specific site at this point. We're talking about this in generalities. And this, I think, is a little bit more specific.
You know, that's a little too vague for me to come to an opinion on.
The only thing I, I'd go on is a growth trend, just based on what some other people said that are kind of in the same type of industry, that they see that there is a need. So I'd say there is growth in that sector.
I'm indifferent on this one. You can't look at the specific case. I agree, I'm not sure there's really change. So I, I'm indifferent on this point too.
Yeah, this is too, this is too, um, for a specific property, not for what we're trying to do. We're trying to do a text amendment for the entire city here. But this is specific to a particular project, so I don't think this is applicable.
Yeah, factually, a comprehensive plan has data from 20 years ago. Well, it's being updated as we sit here, and we don't know yet what, what the characteristics, the demographics of this industry in Galena is currently.
I'm not rather than want the Hush Report yet.
No, I'm not talking about that, whatever that is.
So three, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area and defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district. What are there, uh, maybe adverse impacts on the capacity or safety of the portion of street network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems or environmental impacts that the new zone may generate, uh, such as excessive stormwater runoff, water, air, or noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuisances. I would say again, we're not talking about a specific project within a specific zoning district, uh, but I will, could point out that small inns are only allowed by special use permit. And when they're being considered at that time, all of those criteria are, are being, uh, talked about.
Yeah, I, I would say, through the chair, that this has a little bit of a glancing blow on this text amendment that we're considering now. Compatibility of the surrounding area, the whole area of, you know, the salmon color on our map is in question, residential.
This is, this is the text amendment for not just-
Not for his request.
We're not talking about his request.
That's why I'm not specific what number three is. I think it has application to the text amendment reforms.
It's got to have more to do with-
Well, you, you know that, that-
But anyway, just, his point, you go ahead, since we already jumped to the other side.
Well, I, yeah, I agree with Jim. It's not really, we, we're not doing something here in particular to a project. We're doing this testament for the entire city. So it's, it's hard to answer any of these that's not applicable in this case.
I'll, I'll reiterate the same points that Gates and Bransky made.
And I agree with them also on that is, is for a certain project, not the, really the text amendment itself.
Yeah, once again, that's awful vague for, a yes or no answer on this. I think that has to be looked at separately every time we come across that.
Number four is whether the proposal is in conformance with and in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, other adopted plans and policies, intents and requirements of this code and other city regulations and guidelines. I would submit that this proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan as, and with our current comprehensive plan. That's the only we have right now, so, um, because it, it further enhances the existing tourism base, which is part of our current comprehensive plan. Tourism is supported throughout our current comprehensive plan. So I would say that this is consistent with that.
Yeah, we're talking about the new language of the text amendment. Yeah, I think that would fit in and be applicable to the new, or to the old comprehensive plan.
And I feel it follows policies of the comprehensive plan. Then again, you know, you look at the, the intent, I'm going off what Jim said. He was there when this was written, uh, or what they kind of thought was the intent. Or there was no real discussion on it, so I believe it's good.
The existing and current comprehensive plan is outdated. It's being redone. However, this meets the intent of the current existing comprehensive plan.
I agree with all four of you.
I'm of the mind that comprehensive plans have broad concepts, the future. This is our plan. The ordinance puts teeth in what may be in the comprehensive plan in that this is in the plan itself, the comprehensive plan is an area of possible growth, which is resolved by an ordinance. And it's building singular that resolves that growth in the comprehensive plan. Yeah, we like to grow. We like tourism and that, which is a big part of Galena. But so too is the uniqueness of Galena and its residential areas, its small town characteristics, and that's in the comprehensive plan.
Who we do?
Okay, no, everybody's just giving their point on this. We went through the discussion.
Number five, whether adequate public facilities and services are available or will be made available concurrent with projected impacts of development in the proposed zone. Again, this one's not really applicable, although I would say that any petition would be evaluated as a special use permit and would have to comply with all the site plan review standards of 154.914, which are considerable.
Yeah, I would say the new language would be compatible with that plan there.
And I, I think again, that more speaks on an actual project than so much the testament itself.
Concord, I agree.
I would say that as things grow, however slow with one and then another and another petition and growth, it does affect the services provided, whether it's police, fire, ambulance, toll, any services, any amenities we enjoy and cherish in Galena are affected by growth. Again, a tangent to the question of text amendment.
So it's along the same lines, whether there is an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs. Again, I would suggest that this is not particularly applicable in our case, but it also would be evaluated as special use permit. All those considerations are evaluated in special use permits when someone's coming to actually apply and they have to study the site plan review standards of 154914.
Yeah, I don't know that I know enough to, to say there's adequate land available for making this change.
A non-existent project, right?
Yeah.
And again, I don't believe this is applicable to the text amendment because it's not a separate project.
Because each would have to go through a special use permit, that's a question on there, so. I'm okay with this one.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm okay with this one too.
And then the last one is whether there is a need in the community for the proposal or whether there will be benefits derived by the community or area by a proposed rezoning. I say that there could be, and I would say in the same sense as, as I, how I feel that, how I feel that this is also in conformity with the comprehensive plan for many of the same reasons. That I think there's a benefit. It could, would there potentially be a benefit?
Yeah, I don't think we can say there is a need for it right now, but I don't think we can say there will never be an ideal need for this change.
I believe there could be a benefit on the change in the, the language of the text amendment. You know, down the road, we don't know for sure, but I don't think there's any harm either to the, to the zoning orange by changing it, so I think that'd be fine.
I believe seven is very applicable here. It's not asking us about the future, it's asking us about today, and I do not believe there is a need today.
Um, actually, well, I just, I believe there is a need. There's numbers flowing out all the time, but that 50% number, that is a 365 day a year number. This is a, a vacation community. Unless we start getting small conferences and conventions here on Monday through Thursday, we're never going to get more than 50% occupancy on a 365 day calendar. However, on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday calendar, occupancy in the city is much, much higher than that, much. And I would bet that Matthew's property is nearly 100% on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
I believe both, last two comments here. I don't think though there is a need, Country Fair Weekend, I want to rent my house. But in general, through the 365 days, I don't know if there is a demand.
Okay, that's everybody. Would you call for the question, please? Hold on.
Gates?
Yes.
Monahan?
No.
Honey? Bransky?
Yes.
Spiley?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of the next thing is the agenda. Find a ten most new chair.
We need a public comment?
And most of the second. All those who pay for shaking a five are saying aye.
Aye.
Close the game. Here. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, have a nice night. I'm going to have a back door.
Good discussion, gentlemen.
Good job. You know what? This is, this is a, this is a damn good board.
It's actually active.
Just the actual ones?
Yes.